Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Sandra Merman. Representing District Two, Victor Christ. Representing District Three, Les Miller. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing Countywide District Five, Ken Hagan. Representing Countywide District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing Countywide District Seven, Al Higginbotham. The county administrator is Mike Merrill. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our Board of County Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, August 1st, and we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation from our Chaplain, Commissioner Stacy White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, our local government system is so important and impacts people's lives in so many ways, oftentimes more so than state and federal levels of government, Lord. So with that understanding, I just pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and our stakeholders as we make decisions this morning. As always, Lord, I pray for members of our armed forces and our first responders and that you will see to it that they are comforted and kept safe each and every day. I ask for these blessings in your holy name.
Thank you, Commissioner White. And we do have two absences to read into the record from Commissioner Victor Christ. Please be advised, I'll be unable to attend the Board of County Commissioners meeting on August 1st, 2018, as I will be out of town on a previously scheduled family event. Please read the reason for my absence into the record. And from Commissioner Les Miller, due to a scheduled medical procedure, I'll be unable to attend the Wednesday, August 1st, 2018 Board of County Commissioners meeting. Please read the reason for my absence into the records. And he is having a medical procedure, so we will keep him in our thoughts and prayers. We do have two presentations today, and Commissioner White will present the first
Well, I'm going to be working with the Back to School Coalition on this one, and I think we have with us this morning Tina Young, if you'd like to come up and join me, and bring along anyone that you'd like. I know you have a group with you. You know, I believe Commissioner Christ was originally scheduled to deliver this proclamation. You guys can come up and stand with me if you'd like. And, you know, I think this proclamation was handed off to me because I'm a healthcare professional and specifically a pharmacist, so I can really understand the issues here that we're going to talk about because we're, as I read this proclamation, it addresses back-to-school readiness specifically in the context of healthcare. And I can certainly understand the importance of this and just appreciate this group and all the hard work that you do. So I'd like to read this proclamation into the record this morning. It reads, "Whereas vaccinations and routine physical examinations help protect students from dangerous illnesses that can easily spread in schools; and whereas every child entering a Florida school for the first time is required to undergo a physical examination and receive certain immunizations, and current students must maintain up-to-date vaccinations. And whereas Back to School Coalition of Hillsborough County is a partnership between government agencies, hospitals, nonprofit organizations, service groups, private sector organizations, and the public school system. And whereas the Coalition works to ensure no child misses the first day of school due to lack of immunizations or a physical examination. And whereas since 2005, the Back to School Coalition has sponsored a series of back-to-school health fairs each year that provide free physical examinations and immunizations to students of all ages. And whereas the Coalition-sponsored events encourage early immunization practices, promote healthy lifestyle choices, and cultivate parent and school interaction by providing resources so children begin the new school year with confidence. And whereas this year's events were held on July 21st and July 28th with one more scheduled for August 4th, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare August 2018 as Back to School Readiness Month in Hillsborough County and encourages all parents to take advantage of the opportunity to have their children immunized and examined as they prepare to start the new school year." So dated today, the 1st of August, of course, signed by all seven of the Commissioners. I'll present this to you for a photo in just a moment, but if you'd like to, I'd love to have you say a few words first. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner White, and I would like to thank you on behalf of the Back to School Coalition, the Commissioners. I'm sorry, I'm back to school. But I want to thank you for recognizing and supporting us in our efforts to make sure that children in Hillsborough County are living healthier and that they are starting school on time and that we are arming families with the education that they need to be self-sufficient. With me, I have partners here that I want to mention, and some are present and some are not, but I'm not going to not mention the ones that are not here. So we have Heather Coats and Penny Varner with Bay Care, Diana Lopez, Maria Rivera, Sherry Gay with Sunco Health Clinics, Shawn Davison with Three Ministers of God Christian Church, John, I'm sorry, Joan Warner with South Shore United Methodist Church, Estrella Nia, I'm sorry, I'm messing your name up. Neza from Tampa Family Health Clinics, Eriksen Lopez with Catholic Charities Clinics, Jill Marie Lewis with Hillsborough Health Department, Frances Joseph with Kendu, Della Estella, and Kathy Moore with Tampa General Hospital, Barbara Marcella and Dave Rogoff
and healthy school year this coming year.
with Kiwanis Club of Tampa Bay, Rick Bennett with Florida Blue, Mara, I'm sorry, Mary Couch
School starts next week.
with Humana, Maria Russ with Hillsborough County Health Department, Donald Miller with Middleton, I'm sorry, it's Donald Hill, right?
Oh, this is a great recognition I get to bring forward today.
Sorry. Leonard High School, Bowers Whitley, Blake High, our Hillsborough County schools that
It involves recognizing not one, but two neighborhood warriors.
we utilize. And it's just a sea of people here, and it really takes a village to make sure that
And I know one thinks this is for one, the other person, and the other person thinks
our children are ready and prepared. And I just want to thank my members because we could, I can't do it without them, and
it's for the other person, but we're actually recognizing both of you, so come forward.
I really appreciate all the support from the Commissioners.
Lynette Peel and Rose Marie Middleton.
Thank you again for this time.
So they're really here for each other. This is the dynamic duo of Town and Country. Rose Marie protects the 12 Oaks side, and of course Lynette protects the Baycrest side of downtown and country. Come around, you can stand next to me. Here, so you can lean up. It's fitting that we really recognize them today, and I think our staff in the building know these two women very well because they do it right. They've developed relationships over the years, and they don't always call my office, but I want them to, but they've just developed such great relationships that they can call the individuals directly who are out in the field, helping to keep our neighborhoods clean and safe and all that. So before I present each one of you with your own commendation, I just, I want to personally thank each one of you for your years of support and dedication to your neighborhood but to Hillsborough County. Lynette Peel is a wonderful volunteer. I think she just comes here at least one or two days a week and just volunteers wherever she's needed, and I'm just so grateful. You've championed your neighborhoods with the spirit of Thelma and Louise. That's what these two are. The heart of Lucy and Ethel, and perseverance of 14-plus years, not to mention the countless volunteer hours you both have given to ensure the success of our Neighborhoods Conference year after year. You've both spent many days and evenings in neighborhood relations. You help answer phones, they file records, any task that's asked of them, that they are there and ready to help. The two of you have never been afraid to let your voices be heard, even if it meant loading your neighbors into a bus to attend one of our Board of County Commissioners meetings, taking time to personally know the names of employees that work in your community, to feed and provide Christmas gifts to the trash haulers. Don't know if you all knew that. They recognize our employees. They personally go out there, and I think we have some here today that are here to see these two get honored. They've written letters, held signs, have always been the first to stand up, thank the county from the leadership level to the entry-level employee. I even think Mike Merrill knows these two people. Thank you for living your life with your heart and handout to make Hillsborough County a great place to live, work, and play. As Lynette prepares to move to a new chapter in her life in northern Florida, we'll miss her greatly. I know I will. Because she really does, she keeps me informed as Rose Marie does. Rose Marie's, actually, she's also celebrating a very significant birthday today. And so, not to embarrass her, so it's significant, but we're not going to talk about age, are we? But anyway, the two of them are just wonderful, wonderful people. Hillsborough County, Rose Marie Middleton, they leave the light on for you constantly in the community of Town and Country so that people know how to find their way back and feel safe in their community always. And they actually beautify the community, constantly making it look nice. So I'm going to read these two commendations separately. They're not long, so it does say, "The Hillsborough County," this is for Rose Marie Middleton, "the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Rose Marie Middleton for her 14 years of service to Hillsborough County's Office of Neighborhood Relations, efforts that are a testament to her exemplary leadership in her community. Ms. Middleton's service to the heart of Hillsborough County is a legacy she holds near and dear to her heart. As a teacher for 37 years, she showed her strength when she was diagnosed with a brain tumor in 1982, conquering the disease after being out of work for only six months. In addition, she pursued volunteerism within her neighborhood, the 12 Oaks Civic Association. Now serving as its president, she became an advocate for public involvement that provides a supportive environment for residents. Her unwavering leadership has been invaluable to the Neighborhoods Conference where she serves on the planning committee, she searches for sponsors and presenters, helps in event preparation. Ms. Middleton's steadfast dedication is an asset to the Office of Neighborhood Relations, the community she loves. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby commend Rose Marie Middleton for keeping county neighborhoods safe and prosperous and for her 14 years of devoted service." Would you like to say a few words? Okay. I'll put this up here and then we'll hear you. And then Lynette Peel, my friend Lynette. "Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Lynette Peel for her tireless volunteer service and dedication on behalf of the people of Hillsborough County, efforts that have strengthened the county's neighborhoods. Ms. Peel is a mentor, civic volunteer, friend, and good neighbor who has touched countless lives, well-known as a trustee of the Baycrest Parks Special Taxing District. Ms. Peel is a champion for good government and a determined problem solver who works to find solutions. In 14 faithful years of service to the Office of Neighborhood Relations, Ms. Peel has been instrumental in the success of Hillsborough County's annual Neighborhoods Conference, providing key input while serving on the planning committee, diligently searching for sponsors and presenters, and enthusiastically assisting with event preparation. She is a true leader. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby commend Lynette Peel for her resolute advocacy and good deeds and thanks her for her lifetime commitment to making Hillsborough County a better place to live, work, and play." And that's for you. Would you like to say a few words? Neither one of them wants to say anything. They talk so much, but it's just such a pleasure. And I see so many supporters here in the room that have stood by these two. And I really normally don't do this type of recognition at our Board of County Commission meeting, but I wanted the whole community, the whole Hillsborough County, to see, this is an example of what neighbor, how successful Neighborhood Relations can be when it's got great volunteers like these two women. And I'm just so proud of them, proud of them and the friendship. We're actually sorority sisters, Rose Marie and I are. So we've known each other, but it's just great. So we're going to take a picture.
Commissioner Merman, before we do the photograph, Commissioner Kemp would like to say a few words.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I didn't know you were going to North Florida, so we will miss you deeply, but I-
Pick up from here, pick it up there.
Oh, I know, but we-
She's going to show them how to do it.
Forever, you both have taken such care of Town and Country, and I was actually surprised to hear 14 years because I actually, that would have been about the time that I was in aid to Commissioner Kathy Castor, and I worked closely with both of you, and you were so involved in the Town and Country Library, the Senior Center, all the wonderful things out there, and organized and worked with the community in such a special way. I thought when I got to know you that you had already been doing that for 14 years. I was, so you've done wonderful, wonderful work and example, and just thank you so much.
Can we take a picture?
Keep up the good work.
How you doing?
Hello, nice to meet you.
There was.
Talk about fire sale. I totally won't.
You did.
Okay, we're ready and now go into the agenda. Mr. Merrill, would you like to review the changes?
Yes. We have no changes to the agenda, nothing removed for any purpose, nothing added. We do have three public hearings, four public hearings, and some time certens. Beginning at 10:00 AM is a public hearing to consider enactment of an ordinance amending and restating portions of the Hillsborough County Code for the principal purpose of repealing the current $20 traffic surcharge imposed on certain noncriminal traffic infractions and criminal violations, replacing it with a new $30 traffic surcharge. That public hearing item is related to B-5. B-5 is adopting a resolution which amends and restates an existing resolution providing for the issuance of the 2015 court facilities bonds and in order to refinance that debt in order to accommodate the increased $30 traffic surcharge. We have a public hearing, D-2, which is to consider the adoption of a proposed ordinance granting an exemption from certain ad valorem taxes for Materials Lifecycle Management Company of Tampa under the county's Economic Development Ad Valorem Tax Exemption Program. The applicant, the company, will make a capital investment of approximately $8.8 million in tangible personal property and will bring at least 45 new jobs to our community. This public hearing item is related to B-2, a B-1 rather, which is a resolution recommending that Materials Lifecycle Management Company be approved as a qualified target industry business pursuant to Florida's QTI program. The third public hearing, D-3, is to conduct the public hearing to accept comments on the proposed annual action plan and substantial amendments required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And at 10:15, we have an item, which Commissioner Hagan's item, to direct staff to work with the Spring and Commissioner Hagan's office to bring back recommendations on creating a program that fosters pets of abuse victims. And the final time certain at 10:30 is B-11, and that is to approve a contribution agreement with the Office of Veterans Affairs. That office, the VA office, is providing full funding to the county for design, construction, and right-of-way for the installation of a traffic signal with accompanying roadway and pedestrian improvements, and those are the changes.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Hagan to approve the changes. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Okay, we will now open the public comment portion of the meeting, and I'll make this statement. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the Board, that comments are not directed personally against a Commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the Board members and the public. The Board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comment. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. People wishing to speak before the Board during the public comment portion of the meeting should complete the electronic request for public comment form located in the lobby just outside the Boardroom. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the Board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone, and three minutes will be allowed for each speaker. And our first speaker for on-the-agenda items is David McAllister. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Morning, Chairman. David McAllister, I wanted to speak, and as you know, I come here to advocate for an appreciation for local history and veterans, especially those of the period of the war between the states. Now, I wanted to speak on Agenda Item A8, which has to do with spending nearly $1 million for historic preservation, and I'm all for historic preservation, as you all know. And, you know, I myself and my group even qualified for an appropriation regarding promoting tours of Confederate sites in Tampa, but usually there's a note about where, what is being done where. Today, we're spending nearly $1 million with no real public notice. I just guess that we'll just have to trust the Board of County Commissioners because the public doesn't get to see the added agenda material. So I wish, I wish we would be able to have that in, available in the agendas in the future. I'm sure they're good projects. Well, next, yesterday, Hillsborough County in Tampa had a visitor, the President of the United States, Donald J. Trump. And I may have seen a Commissioner or two, or at least candidates for office, out there at the fairgrounds. He was well-received. Now, I'm wearing a Trump-style red ball cap to remind you all that what the President said just one year ago. There we go. And that was in the newspapers as well. What he had tweeted out on August 18th, 2017, was, "It's sad to see the history and culture of our great country being ripped apart with the removal of our beautiful statues and monuments." President Donald Trump tweeted, okay? Since then, of course, we've had the removal of the monument, "memoria in eterna" in downtown Tampa. Trump went on to say, quote, "The beauty that is being taken out of our cities, towns, and parks will be greatly missed and never able to be comparably replaced." That is very true, very true. That happened here in Tampa one year ago. Matter of fact, one of the county commissioners is quoted in this article later on as saying, "Now we have a guy who calls himself the President of the United States, sounding just like David McAllister and the Save Our Southern Heritage people talking about erasing history. We may not have erased history, but it's been put in the closet, in a place where there's no access, no repose, no respect. It's between a pawn shop and a taco stand. That's not a good thing. And if any of you folks had ever felt threatened by any violence, it was by the Take 'Em Down crowd, okay? And if you were threatened by the Black Lives Matter or Antifa, call the FBI, because the city police did not do anything about forcing our laws." Thank you.
Thank you, David. And we have three speakers for off-the-agenda items. Joanne O'Brien, followed by Johnny and Connie Burton. Good morning, Joanne.
Good morning, Joanne O'Brien, 6916 Thrasher Drive, Tampa. I'm here about pets and what I'd like to see, a program in the prisons with pups and kittens behind prison walls. If that comes to fruition, it will be a great program because we can get more animals socialized and adopted out into the communities. And I want to thank Ken for looking into getting the abused women's shelter involved. in a place where there's no access, no repose, no respect. It's between a pawn shop and a taco stand. That's not a good thing. And if any of you folks had ever felt threatened by any violence, it was by the "take 'em down" crowd, okay? And if you were threatened by the Black Lives Matter or Antifa, call the FBI, because the city police did not do anything about forcing our laws." Thank you.
Thank you, David. And we have three speakers for off-the-agenda items. Joanne O'Brien, followed by Johnny and Connie Burton. Good morning, Joanne.
Good morning, Joanne O'Brien, 6916 Thrasher Drive, Tampa. I'm here about pets. And what I'd like to see, a program in the prisons with pups and kittens behind prison walls. If that comes to fruition, it will be a great program because we can get more animals socialized and adopted out into the communities. And I want to thank Ken for looking into getting the abused women's shelter involved. That's very good, because right now, me and my daughter are fostering a cat for a pregnant homeless woman that was abused till October until she delivers her baby. But it might go further on. So maybe he can get with the Animal Advisory Board with these rescue groups. And maybe we can find placement, but the rescues and fosters are pretty full right now. So maybe we can figure out, you know, how you're going to do that program. It would be a very good program, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Johnny.
Good morning.
Hello, I am Worldwide Global Sovereign Desk Bar HTC Holder Andrew Course, Johnny Bernard Booth Uniform Commercial Code 1-08, formerly known as Uniform Commercial Code 1.207. Okay, number two was here yesterday, Foreign President Donald Trump. I'm gonna go ahead and do y'all in on some other appropriations. Because as of January, he's also your American Prime Minister, as well as your... You gotta understand when he told you temporary Foreign President, and then like he told you on the news, when he is your president. Your last four presidents were slave runners. You didn't have no one to come in to free you until Donald Trump came in. Now, a lot of this black-and-white stuff is mixed information, because there is no white people or black people in America. That's only in England and in Anubia, which is known as Africa now, not here in America. In America, we have beautiful people of beautiful skin tones. Now, the reason why there's a mix-up about the Confederate thing because it's being mixed up with the rebels, mixed up with the Dixie, mixed up with all of this. People are not explaining what they're talking about. They're just showing pictures, showing this and that. The hate greed that is going on is because of the lack of information. Like, there's more education being presented out there. I want to thank Hillsborough County and Tampa Gov. for stepping up in their leadership and bringing y'all into what we're doing right now. Trump has been telling you about sovereign American determination. You guys should really get onto the websites, get to working on that. Get into your genealogy, get into your ancestry. As long as you don't know who you are, as long as you don't know your surname, as long as you don't know what you're doing, you're gonna be the one spreading the hate, because you don't know who you are. You're gonna be the one spreading the violence, because you don't know what's going on. Griping at politicians, griping at all of these governments when you don't even know what agency, what government that you're griping at, or what section. We need you guys to be more responsible with taking up your information, finding out what you're talking about, finding out what government you're talking about. The United States don't even belong to America. Didn't you know that belonged to England? Didn't you know that belonged to France, the Vatican, Rome? Oh, why you think Trump is on them the way they is? I understand some of y'all lack information, because you don't know American history, but you know England history. You need to know both histories, because you gotta understand what has taken place here from the 1400 up to your Freedom Point 2018, like Trump keeps telling you about that special magical year, which most of you are dumb, deaf, and blind still to what is going on. Now, like, the Philadelphia movement, this is where you religions. The Philadelphia movement is where you're supposed to be going. Trying to keep segregating yourselves, many different divisions, and many different religion names just to fight against each other.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Connie Burton. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. I would just like to just really express appreciation for being here this morning and hearing the wonderful accommodations that was given to people from the community. In fact, it just really, you know, kinda like told me, shared with me, that, you know, I need to get more laser-focused on the things that I see as a detriment in our community and to know that the staff and commissioners are so welcoming for citizens to learn. I really appreciate that. But what I'm down here for this morning is that I read something in the newspaper that I consider to be not fake news, but something that has been a big disturbance in our community, and that is the value of human life. According to the press, a young woman was in need of medical service, called out to a division of, you know, the county services, and according to the paper, was denied. And I want to say for the record that I believe that although we understand income-wage gaps and people that have a whole bunch of money, they have a variety of choices. But when it comes down to human dignity and services and the thing called health, there should be something inside of our statute that says that no one should be denied any services that result in a professional being able to make a determination if someone live or die. This young woman by the name of Crystal Galloway is dead, according to the paper, and I hope you dig deep into it and find out who is truly responsible as to why she couldn't get to the hospital in appropriate time. We don't know what the end result could have been if she could've got there, but we know she's dead. And while we are giving proclamations to ensure that children start their school year off with a good quality of life, she leaves three children without a mama. That is something that should concern us, irregardless of what our income say, what our status is. The service providers represented this county. She is dead as a result, 30 years old. And the community is watching. And we want to ensure that Crystal Galloway received justice. And it is stated from this body that all persons are deserving of service, irregardless of income. That people that is delivering services, not the billing department, you got somebody else to worry about that. So Crystal Galloway was her name. She is dead at 30 years old and leave three children to mourn. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes our public comment portion of the meeting. We'll now move to the agenda. We have some time before our time certens.
Adopted consent.
Oh, we have adopted consent, yes. Motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Okay. We have some time before your first time certain, so we'll go to the regular agenda, beginning with Head Start Item B2.
Good morning, commissioners. Dr. Jenkins, Head Start, Early Head Start Department. I'm here seeking approval for an FY18 budget amendment for the Head Start Grant to realign monies from our Personnel Services to operating expenses. This will facilitate additional commitments to our delegate partners and contract partners. You can answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. We have motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Kemp to approve Item B2. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote. On B2. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Motion carried, five to zero.
Item B3, Healthcare Services.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Gene Early. I'm the Director for Healthcare Services. And B3, excuse me, B3 asks that you accept the grant award of $10,282,772 from the United States Department of Health and Human Services, Health Resources and Services Administration for the period March 1st, 2018 through February 28th, 2019. It also requests that you approve a budget amendment resolution to decrease appropriations within the HIV Emergency Relief Program. Ryan White, Grant A, FY18 by $633,549 from the estimated budget of $10,916,321 to reflect the actual grant of $10,282,772. This includes the Minority AIDS Initiative, MAI, of $665,216. Funds will also be allocated to service providers to assist eligible HIV-plus individuals for the period of March 1st, 2018 through February 28th, 2019, and no additional county funds are required.
Thank you very much for that explanation. We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner White to approve Item B3. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Item B4, Management Budget. Actually, I think B4 will hold until we do the staff report, G1. If that's okay. So Procurement Services, B6.
Good morning, Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. Item B6 is asking the Board to award and execute an agreement with the lowest response responsible bidder, MTM Contractors Incorporated, in the amount of $1,252,337.60 for removal and replacement of the existing stormwater pipe along Hanna Avenue in the Bindcrest West Park area of Town and Country for the Public Works Department. A disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal of 6% was established for the project, and the recommended vendor has committed to achieving a higher goal of 6.4, and Procurement Services recommends approval.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner White to approve Item B6. Thank you again for going into Town and Country and solving their flooding problems. All, so without further discussion, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Item B7 is asking the Board to award and execute a two-year contract for ongoing and as-needed purchases of mosquito control chemicals to the respective lowest response and responsible bidders for each specified item for the Public Works Department at a current estimated cost of $3 million per year. In this case, there were no certified disadvantaged business enterprises and no registered small business enterprise furnished with specified goods. Therefore, no participation goal or set aside was established, and Procurement Services recommends approval.
A motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner White to approve Item B7. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Item B8 is asking the Board to award and execute a one-year agreement with the lowest response and responsible bidder, Ajax Paving Industries of Florida LLC, in the amount of $4,722,625 for ongoing and as-needed roads resurfacing, sidewalk replacement, minor stormwater infrastructure repairs, and related small construction projects for the Public Works Department. A disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal of 10% was established, and the recommended vendor has committed to achieving it... Excuse me, has committed to achieving that goal. Procurement Services recommends approval.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner White to approve Item B8. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Lastly, Item B9 is asking the Board to award and execute a two-year agreement in the amount of $8,682,300 with the overall lowest response responsible bidder, Pete and Ron's Tree Service Incorporated, for ongoing and as-needed tree trimming, removal, and stump grinding services throughout the county for various departments. A disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal of 5% was established for the project, and the recommended vendor has committed to achieving the goal, and Procurement Services recommends approval.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner White to approve Item B9. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. B10, Public Utilities.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and members of the Board. Connie Cassina with the Public Utilities Department. The item before you represents our Board's very popular voluntary program where our property owners can elect to pay their water and wastewater impact fees over a 20-year period. When they do that, an annual payment is then placed on the tax roll, non-assessment tax roll. And per our, per Chapter 106 of the Hillsborough County Code, it requires Board approval each year. Therefore, we're requesting the Board approve our 2018 Annual Impact Fee Assessment Resolution and establish that the 2018 Impact Fee Assessment Unit non-ad valorem tax rule. We estimate that the impact fee payments for this coming year will be $25,248,276.11, and that amount has been appropriately included in our next year's coming budget.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Hagan to approve Item B10. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
And Item G1?
We can also take Commissioner Hagan's item.
We don't have anybody here for G1. Oh, there we go.
Oh, okay.
Good morning, I'm Beverly Waldron, the Director of HR, and I'm here to talk to you about our health plan for 2019. Our health plan is a key component of our total compensation package that we offer for employees. It's how we attract and retain good employees. I want to thank you for the help that you've provided that lets us maintain a good, viable health plan. We focus on four things when we're looking at our health plan. We want something that is viable, financially responsible, that it's competitive with our peers, that it provides good value to our employees, and most important, that it's a sustainable plan that we can keep going. We're self-insured, so that means we have to be concerned with both the revenues going in and the cost of claims and fixed costs. We've implemented a very strong wellness program that helps us maintain our costs. We have a focus on preventative maintenance... Maintenance, preventative healthcare. The earlier we can detect, the cheaper it is, the better the outcome for the employee. It improves their quality of life. It improves their longevity. We have a rebate and other incentives that we offer to engage employees. Our wellness program has expanded dramatically. We have proactive disease management for diabetes, for hypertension, for asthma, for obesity, and muscular skeletal issues. And those are being well-received. We've also had a tremendous increase with some of our preventative screenings. Last year, 76% of the individuals eligible for mammograms received mammogram screenings. And we were able, through those screenings, to detect cancer earlier and therefore improve the quality of life of our employees. These wellness programs are very valuable. They help our employees have a better quality of life and increase their potential longevity. For the county, they add higher productivity, less absenteeism, and greater engagement while they're here. They also reduce our costs overall. This year, we worked for over a year running scenarios trying to find the best health plan options for us moving forward in 2019. This year, we're going to two plans. They offer viable, good choices for our employees. There's no change in provider network or the quality of service. It's just two plans. We are only having an increase to the county funding of 2.5%. Employee premiums will increase an average of 2.5%. What actually happens to an employee will depend on their plan and tier choice. We've worked to bring our tiers more in line with industry standards and our actual county payment experience. So we think we have two very good plans that will provide quality service to our, quality care to our employees, and also continue to keep us competitive with our peers. They're also financially responsible. Over the next two months, we will be dedicating ourselves to communicating with employees. We have videos. We are going to be attending workshops with staff meetings. We're gonna have independent workshops. We will show individuals the tools that can help them pick the best healthcare plan. I wanted to take a moment to thank y'all for the feedback y'all provided when we met with you. It's helped inform our communication and make it better when we start meeting with the employees. We are also looking at the next item, which will help ensure our health fund stays viable for the coming years.
Okay, thank you very much. That was a great presentation. And I thank you for the time that you've spent, I know, in my office and the other commissioners. There is, I remember the debate very well when we redid the healthcare plan several years ago. So it was, I think things have really, you've done a great job modernizing the plan and... the plan and really making it serviceable to all the, you know, people, employees that work here. My only thought is next year, when we take a look, is that we, our plan is very robust.
Yes, it is.
Very robust, and we cannot afford to offer, you know, a robust plan, you know, especially in light, I mean, we don't know, but looking at the effects of the homestead exemption, if it passes, different things coming down the pike. I think we're going to have to look at things very hard in this plan next year and make sure that, you know, we still offer good plans to our employees, but that, you know, we keep in mind what our bottom line is, and I know, last year, what was it, 20 million or so, or, I can't remember the exact, but we, we've had to really dip into reserves and pay for a lot of the great benefits we have in our plan. But we, we should not be offering more than what's in the marketplace, and I think that's my only comment. We had a big discussion about it in my office, so, but I really applaud you. I think the staff's done a great job.
Our long-term plan is, is to do exactly what you're describing, we just didn't want to do it all at once, it would be a tremendous shock to the system and employees, so it's a gradual process of moving towards that. A big part of that is wellness. The healthier we are as an employee population, the lower our claims are, better productivity, better service, so it's, it is working towards that goal.
Good, great.
So with that, thank you, Beverly. Then the last item on our agenda.
Okay, I do have, I think we might have a question from my Commissioner, Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you. I just wanted also to thank you so much, I think our healthcare plan is in good hands, and you and your department for what you've done and brought forward, and I detect a whole new sense about an awareness of wellness and the opportunities that are given to people, so I think it's real, very, very good.
Thank you, and we have a good staff. Thank you.
Commissioner White also has comments.
Yeah, so ditto to, to what both Commissioner Merman and Mr. Merrill said, you know, I do agree that, that things should be in line with the private sector, but I do agree with, with phasing this in over time. I'm glad to hear that we have these disease management programs in place. We have a medication adherence program as well, right?
Yes, sir.
Great, great. Well, as a, as a pharmacist, I can speak to the importance of those, you know, with respect to saving dollars on, on the back end, so, so great job, great report, and I'll move to receive the report.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Hagan to receive the report. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please accord your vote to receive G one.
Motion carried, five to zero.
And we're now on B four, right?
Yes, B four is the companion item, which addresses the item you raised, Commissioner Merman, about insurance plan reserves, and it, I'll let Kevin describe.
Good morning, Commissioners, Kevin Bricky with Management and Budget. As Mr. Merrill and Ms. Waldron just stated, we're very interested in the long-term sustainability of our health plan, and this item is asking you to approve a new health insurance reserve policy that would go some way towards doing that. This would ensure that as we do our annual budgets and look at the policy, that we practice sound financial management and sustainability. The policy would require a five-year financial reform analysis of the health plan be done, a five-year look forward. We expect that this financial analysis would be conducted by the actuary of our third-party administrator of the health plan. We consider various strategic options and such, and the input that your own staff would have as well. State statute requires that our health plan keep two months of reserves on hand, that's 17%. This policy would require that we keep three months, or 25% on hand, at the end of five years, and that as a result, we would have a more sustainable health insurance policy. With that, we recommend approval.
Okay, thank you very much. A motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Hagan to approve item B four. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Thanks, Kevin.
Motion carried, five to zero.
And you could waive the rules and take Commissioner Hagan's item. We have a few minutes before public hearing time, so that would be F one.
We have a motion, waive the rules, by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Hagan. Please accord your vote to waive the rules.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Okay, Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was at an event a couple of months ago when I was approached by someone who had a concern that involved domestic violence victims who have animals. She briefly told me about a friend of hers who had been abused but refused to leave her tormentor for fear, for not, that her pet would be left unprotected. She went on to explain that in Hillsborough County, she was unaware of any program or service that fosters pets of abuse victims, but she knew about a program in New York that focuses on this issue. Well, we did some research, and unfortunately, this particular woman is not alone. To most animal lovers, the thought of abandoning their pet is incomprehensible. While feeling even more trapped, many times, the abuse victim will continue to expose themselves to further physical, emotional, and psychological cruelty for the sake of their animals. So we met with the Spring, and the chief program director, Roseanne Kopoly, is here this morning, and while the Spring is not equipped to care for victims' pets, for the past 10 years, the Spring ha, has been coordinating with an area nonprofit to foster animals that arrive where their owner is seeking to escape abuse. For the first seven years, they were fostering an average of nearly 40 pets a year. However, then the provider experienced an adverse change, which dramatically impacted their capacity, and overnight, the number of, of animals they took in yearly has dropped 500% from 40 to eight. So this means that up to 80% of the victims who could not make other arrangements for the care of their animals chose to protect their pet at great risk to themselves. To me, this is absolutely heartbreaking, and this Board needs to do what we can to end this problem. Roseanne, I'm going to ask you to come up, but you're already standing there, so, thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you.
And I just, a couple of questions. Did I adequately describe this issue, and do you feel that there is in fact a need to foster pets of abuse victims?
Absolutely, and thank you for the invitation to be here this morning. We recognize this, probably almost 12 years ago, we were hearing from survivors, survivors face a number of barriers when they're choosing to leave their abusive partner, and one of them is a concern for their pets. Oftentimes, not only do batterers choose to abuse their partner, but also the pets in the home, so like you said, many will not leave if they have a concern for the safety of their animal. We have had a number of providers in the community that have been supportive over the years, but circumstances have changed in, you know, in addition to boarding, some of them also need medical care before they're able to even be boarded, so this is a great need, and as you mentioned, our numbers have gone down dramatically of the number of animals that we've been able to shelter the past couple of years, so it is a need, certainly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And could you identify yourself, just for the record?
Sure, Roseanne Kopoly, I'm the Chief Program Officer with the Spring.
That's great. Well, what a great idea, thank you, Commissioner Hagan.
Scott, before I finish, do you want to add, you want to add anything?
You know, we are, we're dedicated to be in a resource to the community in, in any way that we can, so I think this would be another great partnership. I know we've worked with the Spring a few times since I've been there, and it's challenging, but I definitely understand the separation. To, to most people, their pets are like their family, and they definitely get anxious when they can't, when they would have to leave a family member in a bad situation.
Thanks. For members, years ago, I, I created a program that was called Pets for Patriots, that fostered pets of our servicemen and women when they left for combat. I think this program can be similarly structured, however, it will likely need to involve an outside organization who can foster the network process, and this is due to our public record laws and the delicate nature of wanting to protect the victims of domestic violence. So I, I, I do not anticipate this program to require significant funding. Our last BOCC meeting before we adopt our fiscal year 19 budget is September 6. However, I want staff to have the time they need to bring back recommendations that will provide the most, the much-needed structure or program to address this issue. So the only thing I'm going to, before I make the motion, I'm just going to ask that if staff feels that any funding is needed, that we can make the necessary arrangements either before or after the budget is adopted. And again, I don't think, we're talking about a lot of money here, but I don't want to rush it to try and get it in before the budget when they may need a little bit of extra time to, to come back with the best, the best plan. So with that, the motion is simply that to direct staff to work with the Spring in my office and to bring back recommendations on creating a program that fosters pets of abuse victims.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner White. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. Commissioner Hagan, I just want to thank you for your leadership on this issue. I wholeheartedly support it, and I'll just say to you and to staff that if staff wants to go ahead and, and just put a budget appropriation into the budget, you know, as we head into the September public hearings, I'd be glad to, to support that and, and see it held in the budget.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, and, you know, for years, we've known that people that abuse kids and women often abuse pets, and it, it's really a sad commentary, but I think we're trying to develop programs even through our children's services now to have more eyes out there, to make sure that things are not slipping through the cracks, and this is a great program to really help lift up those people that are victims, so. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner White. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Thank you, more members.
Thank you.
That takes us to our first public hearing, D one, and the companion item B five.
Thanks. Good morning, Sam Hamilton, County Attorney's Office. This is a public hearing, as Mr. Merrill said, on a proposed ordinance, which would amend various provisions of the county code for the primary purpose of repealing the current traffic surcharge of $20 and replacing it with a $30 traffic surcharge. The public hearing was noticed in accordance with law. I believe the Chief Judge would like to address the matter, and it would be appropriate to take public comment, open the hearing, and if you have any questions, obviously, I'm here as well as staff.
Great, okay, we are on item D one, and we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of item D one? Of course, our Chief Judge, we're glad to see you here today.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you all very much. This is, I think, a very reasonable request to increase the charge from $20 to $30. It puts us in line with the majority of the counties in the state of Florida. It puts us in line with the, our surrounding counties, Pinellas, Pasco, Polk, Sarasota, Manatee, they're all at $30. This would be a source of funding to do some work that we need to get done at Edgecombe and at the Courthouse Annex now, also to look toward the future, some work that will probably need to be done to Edgecombe down the line, and possibly get us some starter money to build what I hope will be a criminal court complex in, in the future. So I would respectfully request your support. I want to thank the County Attorney's Office, I want to thank the County Administrator and their staff for their work on this project. Again, I think the $10 increase is a reasonable increase, and the funding can certainly go a long way to help us in our projects at the courthouse. Thank you, ma'am.
That's great, thank you. Is there anyone here else wishing to speak in favor of item D one? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to item D one? Okay, motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner White. Hagan, I'm sorry, by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner White. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Now, we'll need a, a motion to approve item B five, correct?
Yes, let's just get something on the record, though.
Oh, okay.
Kevin Bricky, Management and Budget. Item B five asks you to amend and restate Resolution Number R 05148, the Court's Facilities Refunding Revenue Note, Series 2015. The traffic surcharge that you just approved to increase serves as one of the pledges on that note, and by adopting or approving this item will cause the note to conform to that new revenue amount, and it will also authorize the clerk to pay the costs associated with bringing that forward and accomplishing it.
Great, thank you for that explanation. We are on item B five. We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B five. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Thank you.
And your second public hearing, D two.
Sam Hamilton, County Attorney's Office. This also is a public hearing on another ordinance. This is pursuant to your Economic Development Property Tax Exemption Program. The applicant is Materials Lifecycle Management Company. They've requested a, an exemption for five years of 50% of the assessed value of certain equipment they would be acquiring for their new business. The property appraiser has determined, according to statute and your program ordinance, that the business does qualify for the exemption. Public hearing's been properly noticed. It would be appropriate at this time to open for public comment.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing on item D two, and we'll open that up. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of item D two? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to item D two? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Kemp to approve item D two. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
And then companion item B one.
Good morning, Commissioners, Yasha Petrovich, Economic Development Department. This item is related to the tax exemption ordinance which was just adopted, and is an Economic Development Ad Valorem Tax Exemption Agreement with Materials Lifecycle Management Company to ensure that the applicant satisfies all requirements under Hillsborough County's Economic Development Ad Valorem Tax Exemption Program Ordinance. In addition, included with this item is a resolution recommended that the applicant be also, also be approved as a qualified target industry business pursuant to Florida's Qualified Target Industry Tax Refund Program, providing up to $22,500 of local financial support for establishment of this manufacturing operation. If the proposed operation is established, it's expected to create 45 new higher-wage jobs with average wages of at least $58,383, which is 115% of the Hillsborough County's private sector average wage. Additionally, the prospect is also expected to generate over $8.8 million in capital investment. Staff recommends approval of the agreement and the resolution.
Okay, very good, thank you for the explanation. We have a motion to approve item B one by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Hagan. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
And your final public hearing, D three.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Cheryl Howell, Affordable Housing Director, and we're here today to do a public hearing to accept, to accept comments on the proposed planning year 2018-19 Annual Action Plan and the substantial amendments to Planning Year 14, 2016, and 2017 Action Plan as required by the U.S. Housing, Department of Housing and Urban Development. We're here to close the public comment period that began on July 1st, 2018, and to adopt the Planning Year 2018-19 Action Plan and the substantial amendments for Planning Year 2014, 16, 17, and to authorize the chairman or the county administrator to execute further documentation forms and agreements related to these documents as they are approved by the County Attorney's Office. The- The estimated fiscal impact of the Planning Year 2018 Annual Action Plan adoption is ten million four hundred fifty thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars in estimated direct and supplemental allocations from HUD and program income.
And that would be for much-needed affordable housing.
For affordable housing, so we have to do a public hearing first, and now I'll come back to you. That's great, so, and you'll be putting that out to RFP soon?
They've already gone out for RFP.
Oh, they have?
That's correct.
Great, but ten million dollars this year? That's great, awesome, okay. Now we need to open the public hearing on item D3. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of item D3? Please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning. I just want to thank both her team and you all for supporting HUD funding through CDBG for all of our, the thirty, what is it, twenty-three programs that are getting funding, both through housing and public services. I don't have to tell you, it's rough out there being a not-for-profit, and, and ours particularly, and I didn't identify myself, I'm Cheryl Brown, the executive director of Tampa Lighthouse for the Blind, and ours goes to independent living after vision loss, and we're about keeping people employed every day, just about somebody on a job, people are working longer, loses their vision, and can come in and get services and go right back to work. And we had a lady at a hospital that was a nurse and couldn't be a nurse anymore, on the floor giving shots, but with the computer, the technology training we have, she's back at the hospital, there are many other jobs that don't require nursing. And the other thing, I was just recently surprised, I was sitting in a staff meeting, and we're currently working with three people that were gunshot victims on the roads that have lost their vision, so I just wanted again to thank you all for supporting HUD funding and CDBG, and thank you.
Well, thank you for the great job you do at the Lighthouse for the Blind, really, you're a great director. Okay, so we're still in the public hearing, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of item D3? Anyone would like to speak in opposition to item D3? Okay, board action? Motion by, he made the motion, but Commissioner Hagan Botham, seconded by Commissioner Kemp, item D3. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
And Commissioners, your last item of the day, B11, time certain for 10:30.
Move to waive the rules.
Move to waive the rules by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, John Lyons, Public Works Department. Commissioners, we're asking you to approve a contribution agreement with the Office of Veterans Affairs and authorize the chairman to execute the same on behalf of the county. This provides full funding to Hillsborough County for the design, construction, and right-of-way for the installation of traffic signal at the James A. Haley Veterans Affairs Medical Center on Bruce Speed Downs at Richard Silver Way. This agreement is in the amount of one million four hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars, four hundred forty-three, four thirty-seven, four forty-three. Additionally, Kent Turner and Jim Dankie from the Veterans Affairs Office are here and would like to speak as well.
Okay, sure. I know I've been fighting for this stoplight for a couple of years now, John.
I'll say no more.
We'll have to call you anymore about it. Good, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioner, my name is Kent Turner, I'm the acting associate director at the James A. Haley Veterans Hospital, also the chief of facilities management. This will go a long way for our veterans that use the entrance at the James A. Haley Hospital. It will also improve the pedestrian traffic for the University of South Florida, they're very supportive of this as well, so we really are encouraged about the work we've done with the Public Works Department. Our central office has gotten the funding, and we're ready to move forward on that.
That's awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you do at the Veterans, the VA Hospital. Okay, we have motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B11. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
And any future discussion items?
Any future? We're all exhausted from the budget, so.
Yes.
I think we're taking a week off. Okay, is there any other business to come before us? Seeing none, we are adjourned.